Yes, we're ready. It's six o'clock, I think.
So I'll read the statement of compliance. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of this meeting was published in the local papers on November 8th, 2014 and November 9th, 2014. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on cable television channel 77 and Fios channel 46. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Thank you. If we could please rise for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Shall I call roll?
Yep, call the roll.
Mr. Biancamano?
Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Gold?
Present.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Sobolov?
Here.
Ms. Stromwall?
Here.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Here. So, okay, can I immediately ask for a motion to close? Board, we, so, we are, we're going into closed session now to discuss an update, a legal update, and also to meet with the search firm.
So, it's, so, to discuss pending litigation and personnel matter?
Okay. So, we're going to close for pending litigation and a personnel matter.
I move that we go into executive session.
Second?
Second, by Jean.
Jean Marie.
Call roll. Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Stromwall?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes. Okay, so. Okay, um, so, we are going to open the meeting, have recognition, and then unfortunately we have to go back into closed session, and then we'll resume the meeting, the open meeting after that. So, Bill?
Call a roll on being seated and coming back into session.
Yeah.
Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Stromwall?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes. Okay, so, at this point, we are going to proceed with the recognition portion of the meeting. Dr. Hernandez?
Good evening. Before I start with the student recognition, I would also like to recognize Tim Caligy and his maintenance crew and custodial staff for setting up this auditorium. They worked really hard for a few days, and this is a beautiful outcome. Thank you, Tim. Starting with our Students of the Month, Brand School, Pablo Maggie. Come on up, Pablo.
You go next to Dr. Hernandez. Very good.
Pablo is an exceptional student. He is confident and hard-working, English-language learner, who always strives to do his best. He has really shined this month with his model student behaviors and jolly personalities. He loves learning and enjoys playing with all the, with all of his friends he has made in kindergarten. We are so proud of Pablo. Shine on. Please join me congratulating Pablo. Our next student is a third grader from Calabro School, Alexis Kay Sayon. Alexis is a, is an exceptional, respectful, and well-mannered young lady. She succeeds and excels in all academic areas. She continues to go above and beyond to help her fellow classmates and teachers. She has proven herself to be a leader and a role model, both in her classroom and throughout Calabro School. Overall, Alexis exhibits academic excellence, peer leadership, pride, and self-motivation. All of these attributes have led Alexis to represent our school as Calabro School Student of the Month for October. Please join me in recognizing Alexis. Our next student is from Connors Elementary School, fourth grader, Emilio Liano Leo. Emilio Liano is an exemplary student for the entire school district. He consistently demonstrates superior effort academically and shows leadership in helping other students achieve success as well. He is a member of the Gifted and Talented Program at Connors, as well as an active participant in the John Hopkins After-School, After-School Program for Math and Reading. Emilio Liano is also a helpful candidate for the NJIT Summer Pre-College Program. Although he excels academically, Emilio Liano has additional talent and interest. He plays on a travel soccer team, loves to visit museums, and is an avid reader. He's always striving to further his abilities and seeks input on how to improve. Emilio Liano is an inspiration to everyone he meets, and this award is well-deserved. Please join me in recognizing Emilio Liano. Our next student is a fourth grader from Wallace, George Costopoulos. George, George is a hard worker. He enjoys learning new things and takes pride in work. George is helpful to his classmates and enjoys helping his teachers. George is a pleasure to have in class. His determination and dedication to learn and achieve is outstanding. Please join me in recognizing George Costopoulos. Our next student is our junior high school student, eighth grade, Michelle Two. Michelle is dedicated and is an amazing writer. She is never happy with just doing well on assignments or projects. She wants to do better with every task. She is an excellent student and an excellent role model. She enjoys being a student at the Hoboken Junior/Senior High School. Please join me in recognizing Michelle. Last but not least, our senior from the senior high school, Destiny Giddi. Destiny has done an excellent job learning the five stages of commercial creation. She has worked hard with her team to create a screenplay and storyboard to submit to our production company. She was a key player in working with the camera department and videotaped the footage needed for our first commercial at the high school. Destiny has also been directing the girls' soccer team, videographer, and capturing the last two games on video. Destiny is also a member of the Hoboken Junior/Senior High School Hispanic Culture Club and Student Council. Please join me in recognizing Destiny.
And thank you. That concludes the recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Hernandez. We apologize to the public. We have to go back into closed session, but we wanted to take care of the recognitions ahead of time in order to let the children go home and get a good night's sleep for school tomorrow. So, um, we are going into closed session to discuss personnel, personnel items. For approximately forty-five minutes, we'll be, we'll make sure we're back at eight o'clock.
All right, I make, I move that?
Second. Take the, um...
Take roll?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Stromwall?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes. Okay. Thank you for your patience. So, Bill, will you bring us out of closed session? Do we have to make a motion to come out of close? No, we just take roll, right?
I'll take roll.
Okay.
Mr. Biancamano?
Aye. Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Sobolov?
Here.
Ms. Stromwall?
Here.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Here. Okay, so we're going to get started with the regular meeting, and we'll start with the superintendent's report. Where are you?
Right, right here. I'd first like to say on, on this day, it's Veterans Day, and we, we want to express our sincere appreciation for all the veterans, you know, in Hoboken and every place else in the state and in the nation, for their service to the nation over the years. You know, some districts are closed today, some are open, but they're always in our thoughts, and I wanted to make a comment about that. We appreciate the service that the veterans gave us from the bottom of our hearts. So, thank you very much. I don't know if anybody on the board wants to add to that, but I wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, said it nicely. Thank you.
Okay. One of the things that we're going to be submitting to the State Department is the Statement of Assurances for the CUS Act for this year. You know, as you know, we had the site visit last year, and we created the District Improvement Plan for that site visit. But every year, every district has to submit a Statement of Assurances. And our Statement of Assurance this year takes into consideration some of the things that we need to have in place, and we see to it now that we do have them in place, which hopefully then results in better results three years from now when we're site-visited again. So, that's on the agenda tonight. And I want to say also, we had a, a team representing Hoboken meet with the team from Stevens Institute of Technology the other day. They have a lot of exciting programs, and they're dedicated to working with the city of Hoboken and with the school district in Hoboken on creating a lot of opportunities for our students, and we're going to be looking forward to working with them more closely in the future so that we can implement some of those programs. And that's it for my report.
Okay, thank you. The Business Administrator's Report?
Yes, I have one, one item. It's basically a follow-up from last meeting. As discussed at the prior regular meeting, I had reported that Hope's CAP had two financial audits conducted over the summer. They had a certain amount of findings in those two reports. They created a corrective action plan. They were approved by their board, submitted to us tonight. It's on there for consideration. It's 10.09. Depending on how it goes tonight as far as approvals, if it is passed and accepted by the board, it'll be presented and placed on our website in the Business Administration area. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports. We'll start with Monica and Curriculum and Programs.
The curriculum meeting was held on November 5th at 5:30 at the Demerist Conference Room. In attendance was Dr. Hernandez, Dr. Gold, Ms. Tyroller, Ms. Ducanto, Mr. Bartlett, and myself. We talked about Professional Development Day report. There was positive feedback came back from the survey given to the staff. Mrs. Ducanto and Mr. Bartlett spoke about the presenters that came in and gave presentations that day. They said it was an extremely positive event, and the staff felt it was the most beneficial Professional Development Day that they had to date, and so they were looking forward to meeting the expectations for the next PD. We talked about building park awareness, district-wide report. Report was presented, and examples of park readiness were shown to committee members. Park Saturday prep was discussed, as was the online program where parents and students can view examples of park test questions. This will be a wonderful tool for our students to use at home to be, to get acclimated to the park. We also discussed New Teacher Institute report. Thirty-two teachers, they're new and non-tenured, attended a one-hour Professional Development presentation. Topics included teacher evaluation tools and checking for understanding of lessons while teaching in the classroom. The staff had a good time and was eager to participate, and they're enjoying the presentations with the district. And that concluded our meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
So, the Governance and Personnel Committee was held, meeting was held on Monday, November 3rd, from 10 to 12. In attendance was Dr. Brakel, myself, Ms. Fabian, Dr. Gold, Dr. Hernandez, Mr. Moffett, Ms. Tyroller, and Ms. Sobolov. Ms. Fabian updated the committee on pending legal matters, and the committee reviewed all agenda items for governance and personnel and recommended all items for approval by the board tonight. That's it.
Thank you. And Mr. Clubfeld, Finance?
The Finance Committee did meet on Wednesday, November 5th. With me were Dr. Gold, Mr. Moffett, Ms. Sobolov, and Ms. Stromwell, Stromwall, I'm sorry. The, I think there's only ten items on the finance agenda this week, and we reviewed them all. Most of them are normal enroll claims and things. In my report to the board, I did point out three things, and probably some of the peers mentioning. Mr. Moffett did talk about the Hope's, uh, audits and the findings. So, that's on the agenda. It's not, it's not a reflection on the district or our business office, but we take responsibility for it because the money flows through the state to them.
Correct, right.
And I think if people are looking at a, an agenda out there, you'll see a normally large type pointing out a list of laser jets, printers, and gateway equipment. We did ask about that, and we were assured, and some internet research on my part points out that this equipment is borderline ancient, obsolete, and/or it's broken. So, just for a chain of command, we're sort of decommissioning that and approving permission to recycle appropriately and get rid of the equipment. And as I said, all, everything we recommend for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sobolov?
Athletics and Arts was held on Mon, excuse me, Monday, November 3rd. In attendance was Dr. Hernandez, Ms. Tyroller, Ms. Mitchell, Dr. Gold, and myself. Senior, under Athletics. Senior night, we had, during the games, there were some football games and the soccer games where they were honoring the senior student athletes on those teams. So, the football game included also the cheerleaders and any members of the band, and the rec department's junior red wings also participated in, in those events. So, Hoboken High School won Friday's game over Marist, which was 53-13. So, now they were entering the 2014 NJSIA playoffs, second seed, I believe. Their next game is Friday against Glen Ridge. The girls' soccer are also in the state playoffs. Cross-county track team is competing in the county tournaments. Swimming and bowling begin on November 15th. Indoor basket, basketball indoor track and cheerleading begin on December 1st. And for updated information regarding schedules and news, you can check the new Hoboken High School sport website, which is hobokenredwings, one word, dot org. Underperforming Arts, on Friday, October 17th, the Student Drama Club held a well-attended family movie night. It was open to the entire community, and she raised $2,000 at that event for the drama club. On Thursday, October 30th, the same Student Drama Club held a children's theater workshop at Wallace, where Ms. Miller and some of the high school students worked with some of the elementary school students. I think there was about 25 students there, and that was a fundraiser. They raised about $250 there. The Drama Department is currently preparing for the Stan competition, which is poetry and speech, and the auditions for Grease began this week.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, Facilities and Wellness?
The Facilities Committee met on November 3rd, 2014. In attendance was Leon Gold, John Peproda from Sodexo, and his, the account manager, Dorian, and Brian Beany, also from Sodexo. Tim Caligy, the facility manager, and myself as chair. Sodexo, as requested, is reaching out more to parents and students, and they'll be reaching out to the elementary PTOs for feedback on their school meals. They're also developing several surveys, and they'll be distributed to students on an iPad in the cafeterias, cafeterias, as well as off the district website. They're also offering a $5,000 Stop Hunger Scholarship, and the information is available on the district website, on the students' heading off that website, off of our district website. Sodexo will be holding a special Thanksgiving lunch for each of the elementary schools. We'll be having a carving station, and they'll be serving turkey and fixins at each school. It's usually going to happen around the third week of November. We're looking into whether Sodexo can serve dinner to the students in the theater program, those children that are working, you know, practicing in the evenings, as well as the athletics. We're waiting for an answer from the state and the meals, to see if the meals can be, will be served free to the students. At Facilities, the scaffolding at Brand, the bids spec, specifications were sent to the state, and we expect the request for bids to go out in about a week. In October, there are boiler inspections in all, in all the school buildings, and they're all working properly for the winter months ahead. The Demerist boiler installation was completed. At the high school stadium on Jefferson Street, there is a shady strip of land that is frequented and abused by people walking their dogs, and TD Bank has offered an $8,000 grant for the environmental studies students at the high school to redesign the parcel of land. So, the environmental science students will compete on the best design and implement, implement the best design. The Facilities Committee were batting around ideas about stained glass foundation for Demerist. If you look above you in the audience, you'll see that there's some beautiful, what's it called, stained glass. It was analyzed a couple of years ago by Dr. Toback. Well, he didn't analyze it. I mean, he commissioned an, an analysis, and it's not Tiffany, but it's still just an absolutely beautiful glass. So, we'd like to see if we could have the community perhaps participate in a stained glass foundation. It's been covered with, what is it called, tar in the 1930s, and it would be, it would be, you know, it's very similar to the stained glass at the train station, Hoboken Train Station. Let's see. The committee had a creative discussion on the ideas to renovate this ceiling, and it would certainly add value to the school and to the enjoyment of the community. And that's my report.
Thank you. And just for the audience to know, the, there is now a fourth floor, but originally, when this building was built, there wasn't. So, that's why that was just like, you know how train stations have the stained glass, and obviously the tar was done because of when they were taring any light source, right, during the war. So, yeah, it's interesting. Thank you, Jean Marie. Okay, President's Report. We welcome to the new meeting spot here in Demerist. It's good, we believe, because, one, we don't have to move the meeting for a larger audience. There's plenty of seating. It gives Wallace School a dedicated music room, and the goal is to have us sit in a more collaborative arrangement. And we actually have a little more room, so we can even create a better U than we anticipated. What was interesting was when we decided to make the move to Demerist, almost simultaneously, Mr. Clubfeld and I and Dr. Brakel all said, "Let's work on the seating arrangement so that it's more collaborative." So, just for you, for a little information, most boards do sit in a U, and we see this at, you know, where you're looking at each other and conducting business eye to eye. And we actually see that with our council meetings, that they sit in a curved fashion so that they can talk to each other, because the board meetings are really for the board to come together to discuss, share opinions, and vote on items. It's not supposed, you know, that's part of what this is. This is our business meeting. So, we're hoping that the U will help that. And interestingly, for you, Mr. Gagliardi, there was a period of time, Mr. Caligy said that the lawyer actually did sit with the board and, at some point. So, this isn't completely foreign to Hoboken. Okay? I know change always feels odd at first, but I'd just like to say, I hope everyone, everyone on the board, and as well as the audience, you know, look at this with an open mind, and hopefully it'll be better for us in the end. Also, the other good thing is, this is a beautiful room. It's a nice stage. This, the acoustics in here are of high quality when it was built, and this is another forum that could possibly be rented for use by the public. So, I think this gives it a little bit more exposure. Okay, last Tuesday was Election Day. First, I'd like to thank everyone that ran for the board this year. I commend you for stepping up and running for an elected position. It is not an easy thing to do, and it takes a lot of time and motivation. And, you know, win or lose, we're, we're grateful for everyone that runs, because that's how we have the best selection and the most involvement in the school board, which is what we want. Just like we, the meeting, the, in, by having the vote in November, we get more people out to vote, which makes them more interested, more interested and aware of what's going on in the schools. We also, it's also great to see people step up and run for school board. I'd like to congratulate Peter Biancamano on his reelection. Congratulate Monica Stromwell on her election, because this is her first time running, and also congratulate and welcome Sharon Angley, who's in the audience tonight, to the school board. Ms. Angley will be sworn in in January. So, congratulations. Mrs. Rhodes Kearns is, is not with us this evening, but I just wanted to say that we are saying goodbye to Mrs. Rhodes Kearns on the board. Mrs. Rhodes Kearns has been an elected trustee of the school board for nine and a half years when she steps down in, in January. And she also has served as a representative from the Hoboken Board of Ed in many county and state-level committees, which has been great for the board. And so, on behalf of the board and the citizens of Hoboken, I would like to thank Mrs. Rhodes Kearns for her service. And she, yeah, so, and she also was, let me just, I left out, and she also, everyone should know, was, she was a very active parent as well. She was active on the PTOs and school committees, so we wish her well.
It was just, one, one small correction. It was twelve and a half years she served on this board.
Oh, it was twelve and a half? Okay, I was trying to have somebody look that up.
Yeah, no, just the...
I apologize. She was twelve and a half years. Okay, so, now, questions from the board on committee reports. We'll start with you, Peter.
Yes, thank you so much. Just one quick question, Mr. Moffett. I feel like this is a monthly routine here. In terms of the scaffolding at Brand School, I know Ms. Mitchell, in her report, said that we're going up for bids next week. What's the process from now, from now on? Because again, I just, I reminded us last meeting that we only have, we only paid for that we only have, we only paid for the scaffolding until the end of December, and then it's gonna start costing us more money. And I think it's wonderful that the SDA said they're going to pay us, repay us in full for it. But I just want to know what's the next steps in terms of what's gonna happen after the bids come in, and so on and so forth, for the facade to start actually being fixed?
Well, let me address the first issue. We've given that specification to include scaffolding, to change all the documents, which is similar to last time I reported out. I haven't heard back from that final documentation package to include that. I anticipate that. As far as going out to bid, I know we are preparing to go out to bid, but that'll hit the streets. Obviously, depending on the response, we could then decide if it's in budget or not in budget, and then it would go before the board for approval. Again, since it's an SDA project, they do hold a lot of the reins. I still would like to see a little bit more information from the SDA to move forward. I haven't really seen much of that. But the fact that they did read life into the package, I'm encouraged. But I have to say, I remain a little skeptical. And until I see the paperwork hit my desk, I definitely would question it. But that's about the best I could do for a report. But if you'd like me to investigate further, I can.
Yeah, please, because we are expected, it seems like we're gonna be expected to take more money out to keep the scaffolding up, because obviously, the facade's not gonna be fixed by the end of December. Am I correct, Mr. Moffett?
Say that again?
We're gonna be asked to be, there's probably going to be another resolutions for more money for scaff, to keep the scaffolding up, obviously, after January, because the facade won't be fixed by the end of the year.
Yeah, I would say at this stage, since I don't have paperwork to review, I would say the timeline is gonna be pushed out. But I could get a report to you about timeline? I've just, I don't have that--
As long as we have the SDA word that they're going to reimburse us in full.
That is what I hang my hat on. And I do not have that at this stage to move forward with the project until I get that done.
So possible for the next meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McAllister.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Tyroller.
Any questions? Jean Marie? Nope. Irene? This side? Okay, yes, and thank you for the clarification on the situation at Brant. It's a shame that the district is at the mercy of the SDA and how quickly we're gonna be able to move on that. It's good to hear that it's going out for bid. And so hopefully, the SDA will continue to keep on it, which we've managed to get them to finally do. So, okay. So now, we are up to comments on agenda items from the public. So, Mr. Moffett, can you call the first person? And Tom, Mr. Klubfeld, we'll be keeping your time, and he'll do the little finger when you get to one minute.
Right. I have three that are signed up on the agenda items only.
Three people?
Three people. The first individual is Dr. Carolyn Oliver Fair.
Good evening. I have no comments, suggestions, or questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Second speaker is Patricia Waiters.
Patricia Waiters, 1233 Park Avenue. These are for the computers on page 1 through 15, and the printers. Are these the computers that the sixth and seventh graders used to utilize? What are these computers? Printers, lasers, gateway?
Yeah, these are all equipment. They're faxes, printers, desktops--
That the school used?
--that are from like 1998. They're extremely old. They're non-functioning and past their useful life. We had it reviewed and, I would say, reviewed and analyzed, if you'd like to say, by our technology coordinator. They're obviously not functional. We can't even redeploy them at this stage. We've taken parts from them. I call them cadavres on some level, because they've parted out and they were able to keep other machines going. But these are just the plastic and metal residual equipment that's left in its wake. And quite honestly, we do have an issue with space, and we're trying to find space for storage, potential classrooms for the future. This will help us clean up some of the rooms. And this is an accounting function where we identify these items that are in our inventory. And to remove them, the board has to take action to dispose of them. And that's what you'll see tonight. Again, these are, this document in the listing that Mr. Klubfeld had alluded to earlier, again, includes faxes, printers, monitors. And we're gonna also comply with environmental regulations and dispose of them accordingly.
Thank you. All right, that's page 1 through 15. All right, down on page 11. The Hoboken Police Department. It says, "As needed for games, $22,000, or not to exceed contract for $22,000." Do the school board pay the Hoboken Police Department?
What agenda item, Ms. Waiters?
I'm gonna check that out, too, with Public Safety. I never heard the school board paying the police department. So Hoboken PD don't just provide their services for games?
I think she's talking about under contracts. Where's the--
Yes, it's a contract--
Do you want me to address that? Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, this is something that we do every year. This is for security purposes, for our various activities. The police officers from the department will provide security at all these different functions. And we think it's a health and safety issue, so--
Pay $22,000.
Okay. We can address it again later. Let's continue, so you don't use, you can use up your time, okay?
I know, I'm addressing agenda items, Madam Chair, with all due respect. And Wallace School, too, the registrations. I'm seeing these classes, are they being paid by the board? If you want to just answer it all, you can just run it all concurrent. Let me just finish here. And that's it for now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waiters. Next speaker?
The final speaker is Brian Murray.
Brian Murray, 1100 Maxwell Lane. Before I ask my questions, one comment. If you sit out there, it's really hard to hear. So I know that this is a new forum.
Do you think it's because we're not close enough? Or do you think it's feedback? We'll figure it out.
Kind of reverb or something.
Okay, thank you.
A few questions. Follow-up on Ms. Waiters' question about the security for the winter basketball. That would be eight home, seven or eight home varsity basketball, men's games or boys' games, and probably about the same for the girls. What does this actually encompass? Does it encompass JV as well? And does it encompass rec? And so what are we actually paying for that?
What number are you talking about, Mr.--
This would be under the contracts for the school year. The page doesn't have--
1007.
And then also, on that same page, the Passaic County Educational Services Commission for the professional services. It specifically says here in the note that those services will be consistent with an inter-local agreement that has not yet been negotiated. Yet, this start date of this contract is tomorrow. So how can you start a contract tomorrow that needs to comply with something that you haven't negotiated already? And that might be a question for Mr. Gagliardi. That, you know, you can't say that you're going to comply with something that you haven't agreed with, and then where does that leave us when, you know, maybe we start a contract, and then it's not in compliance with what we haven't yet negotiated?
Agenda item number on that one?
It's right below the, it's right below the other one, on the same page for the contract. And then, and the actual services themselves looks like professional services, technology staff assessments, professional development services, and an on-call technology services. It kind of leads me to the question of like, what do we really have in terms of technology staff currently in the district that, you know, it looks like on-call technology services, and then somebody who's gonna be doing staff assessments? Do we not have any senior technology person that's able to do this job? Or are we simply farming it out to someone else? And then lastly, a lot has been made about the budget and, you know, what can be, what can be saved? What can be spent? You know, what we can do? And it really confuses me that Agenda Item 9.12, which is, you know, it's a small item, but it's a big item. Because it looks like we're paying, you know, as this is written, that we're paying someone, roughly $1,800 to operate the scoreboard at the JV basketball games. You know, when we, when I grew up, you know, it would be another student, or someone, or a parent that would, this is a JV basketball game, and we're paying $1,800 for somebody to come in here and run the scoreboard. Now, $1,800 might not seem like a lot, but given that we're paying about $900 here for a field trip for the gifted and talented fourth graders, that $1,800 might be able to be used for a couple more field trips. And maybe we could get one of the students, the kind that videotaped this, this meeting, to do it for, you know, $10 or $12 or something to that effect. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the administration want to make any comments?
I think in terms of the technology services, Passaic LoTech does offer some assistance. And we want to perform an audit as part of the major district goal to see if we're doing the right thing and see how our people are performing. And they will assist us with that. And again, you know, part of the goal, Brian, is to, evaluate and see where we are right now with the current status, and then make recommendations for the future. So we felt that they're able to provide those services for us and help us out in that.
Yes.
Ms. Tyroller? Correct me if I'm wrong, and Dr. Hernandez, you might, since you were in the district a little longer. There has always been police presence at basketball games in the past few years, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And we've always paid for it. It was never gratuity that they showed up, correct?
Correct.
We always paid for their presence at the games. It was never free, correct?
It's always, in all my experience in every district, I've been in all K-12 districts, do have police presence at ballgames, and it's always paid.
Dr. Hernandez, would you like to comment?
Yes, I agree with Dr. Brockell. That is true, that we do pay for security at games, football and basketball.
Thank you.
It's common practice.
Yes, Ms. Sobolov?
And it's on an as-needed basis. So some events may require one, you know, some other games or--
Depending on the size.
Right, as needed, yeah.
On the expected size. And we, and we, of course, know, because we have a history of playing the different teams, we know what kind of, if 100 people come, or if two people come. Yeah. Any questions over here? No? Then let's, is there a motion to vote on a consent agenda? But first--
Madam President?
Yes.
We want to pull 9.--
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to comment. I think, Miguel, you're about to say the same thing that I was going to say. Before we get into the action item vote, we do have to pull one item. It's Item 9.19, and it's the approval of students to school choice pending NJ DOE. There's some confusion at the state right now about conversion students versus choice students.
I was gonna ask that question.
Yeah, so we need to pull that pending further clarification from the State Department.
And, Dr. Brockell, that's because this new school choice cap that's in place, correct? Because I was gonna ask that question. Where it seems like every month, we're creating resident students into school choice students--
Right.
--and the state has capped it. I'm sorry.
The state, yeah, the State Department's a little confused itself on, you know, the conversions versus the choice, and the cap, and the funding, and the whole package. So we need to pull that pending further clarification.
Right, right. And I guess the confusion comes, is it the cap for new students coming in? Or are these resident students technically new choice students, rather? Coming in, so I appreciate you pulling that in.
Since these students are already going to our school and are happy with it, and are--
We allow them to stay.
And are a good representative of it, is there any danger the state might get in the way of us taking them back?
No, there are people who moved, who are currently attending--
So it's not, there's no jeopardy in terms of them not being able to--
No, no jeopardy at all.
Okay.
Okay, so do I have a motion to vote on a consent agenda minus the pulled item?
Motion.
Jean Marie, motion second? Second. Ms. Sobolov? Call the--
Ms. Tyroller, before I vote, I can make two comments regarding agenda items, correct?
Yes.
They're just comments. They're not gonna affect my vote.
Just before you vote, that would be great.
Great.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Biancamano?
Like I said, two quick comments. 9.07, the approval of transfers. I just want to commend the administration, because Number 12, Mr. Delafave, is on here, going from an English teacher to a gifted and talented teacher. So I want to commend on hiring, or promoting, or transferring from within. I got to speak to Mr. Delafave several times, and I think he's a very good candidate for that position. And I'm glad the administration thought so as well. The second thing was 9.14, which is the approval of a volunteer on the Hoboken Early Childhood Committee. I received the correspondence regarding the specific recommendation from a member of the public, basically stating some negative things that this recommendation was saying on social media and things like that. And I discussed it with my colleagues before coming out here. And certainly, the comments could hurt a segment of the population. So I wanted to just bring that up. When I did my own research before I looked, or after I looked at the certain tweets that were on social media, I noticed that the candidate was writing very, very good things on another form of media regarding making sure that our students stay in this district. So I just want to caution this candidate, this recommendation, that when you, now, when you're going to be placed on this early childhood advisory committee, that you need to use discretion anytime you talk on social media, because you are representing the whole population and not just a segment of the population. So I just wanted to point that out there. Now, my votes. I'm gonna vote no on 6.01, which is the minutes, and yes on everything else. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Klubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes, I had a, wanted two comments. One, I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Delafave. He is an amazing teacher, and I think he's gonna do a great job on the gifted and talented. And under the resignations, I wanted to say an absolute sincere heartfelt best wishes to Mr. Dobish, an amazing math teacher in the district for many, many years, and now an inspiring industrial arts teacher. So I wanted to add those two things. And then there's another, I just kind of wanted to point this out as people flip through the agenda. There's kind of a long document called the Annual Nursing Services Plan, which, you know, maybe you might not want to look through. You think it's gonna be boring, but the nurses, even in the document, it says, you know, the nurses, you think, oh, maybe you go to them for a Band-Aid, or, you know, they kind of take care of the kids, the illnesses. But if you read through this report, it's really actually an incredible thing. I mean, the amount of work, the types of things that the school nurses do on a daily basis, a daily basis, dealing with asthma, heart conditions, you know, seizures, a hundred and forty emergency care plans in the district on any given day, a hundred and nine 504 plans, two hundred and twenty-eight children with asthma. So, I just really wanted to commend the nurses, the school nurses and kind of give them a shout out and, you know, ask you, if you flip through that plan, it's kind of very interesting. So, yes.
Ms. Stromwell?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Yes. Okay, next we will have a public, open public comment where people can comment on whatever they like.
We have four speakers. First individual is Dr. Carolyn Oliver-Fair.
Our next speaker?
Patricia Waiters. First of all, I want to thank everyone that came out and support me. Congratulations, Peter and all the board members. You know me very well. I stood at this microphone five years. I'm a go-getter. This is just the start. I'll be picking up petitions in another eight months. They already have minds waiting at the door. With that being said, I never will use the word disappointed, but I have some concerns. I'm looking at the numbers from the election and I won really heavy in the fourth, the third and the fifth ward. And it bothers me a little bit because I have some parents here tonight from the fourth ward and seeing that four hundred and forty-nine parents, three hundred and eighty-five in the third ward, four hundred and forty-nine in the fifth ward, came out and supported me and voted for me. What's troubling with that is most of these kids depend on the public school system. And all I could say is wow. This was one of the worst elections and I'm so glad you brought up social media, Mr. Bianco, because I always said when I run in this town, the slander in this stuff is not worth it, okay? I'm going to call you Mr. B from now on since she think it's kind of comical that I said your name wrong. And, and when I was in the fourth ward, even being approached by my candidate, Ms. Mitchell here, making sure that everything was okay, she was willing to take my picture. I mean, I was literally followed and harassed this election. And it bothers me because I sit back and I laugh because I said, win or lose, I stand at the same microphone and tell these same parents, I'm not going nowhere. None has given me more strength. I'm like Ivory soap. I will not sink. I will fight even harder. And when I'm, and when I'm attacked with negative comments, to go that low to call the deputy of elections to follow me after running five years, the deputy of elections even laughed at me and said, Patricia, they calling complaints on you. You were so, I just say one word is intimidation. But I'm not going to be intimidated and I told you before the election, I'm not intimidated by your eight to one. And I told you, Peter, the night of the election, have a strong backbone because you're not just dealing with Pat Waiters. I see what I have to do now and that's to involve the state because it's mandated by the state and federal laws to promise these kids a quality, free education. And we all got off that topic. We all got off, we don't even, we take a known disregard to these kids and their concerns and these numbers are speaking loud and clear, loud and clear. And I refuse to see any of you run for public office in my city and sit up there and take a known disregard to these serious concerns, okay? Now, I have here tonight, the School Board Association, some documentation that I'm going to go do with the superintendent at a later date, and a paper that I asked when then-President Gold was the president, I asked for an emergency meeting concerning these serious same parents about some serious concerns and I was denied, okay? And I know each and every one of you got a copy because I CC'd this board in its entirety and it's dated April sixteen, two thousand fourteen. So, no, it wasn't politically motivated and no, it had nothing to do with me losing the election. I'm here tonight to show you that not only do I want this entertained and I told you, Mr. Superintendent, with all due respects, because you just got appointed and it's kind of shaky because you get appointed by these board members, but I don't want you feeling intimidated either because you here, because you have a job to do for the children. And with this being said, I not only want this looked into that I gave to Mr. Gold about his comments, the other allegations where the audio mysteriously didn't work from the last meeting when I mentioned the ethical other behaviors that I'm looking into, okay?
Ms. Waiters, address, address me.
All right, ma'am, and another thing too, like I spoke to you earlier, I want you to learn the lawsuit about the public meeting when the Jersey City Board got addressed. That was his rule he invented where we have to address you. I address the government body, it's nine of you, okay? So, it's not all about you, like I told him. So, why don't you go read that Jersey City lawsuit about the public meetings, okay? Because it's not about you. I'm addressing all of you in its entirety like this letter that was ignored. Now, I'm wrapping it up to say one thing. Thanks again to every mother, everybody that supported me. Numbers don't lie. I'm going to be here and I'm holding each and every one of you accountable for your actions. And these allegations, okay, allegations I said, I said it right this time, I want them looked into and I want them taken very seriously. And I don't want no intimidation and bullying on my new superintendent because you do pick his seat. You appoint him to that seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wait, Mrs. Waiters. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Lynn Dansker.
At the end, it was the political machine that secured two seats on the Board of Education and big money that secured the third seat. As a first-time candidate, I did not have either local politicians or big money to support my campaign, but I did have support from every ward in this community and I did so the old-fashioned way, by knocking on doors and speaking to families in every, every inch in this community. I may not have secured a seat on the Board of Education, but I am a winner based on how I ran my campaign and for that, I'm very proud. NewJersey.com published an article today entitled, I'm sorry, it was yesterday, entitled "New Jersey School Test Score Results: How Did Your School Score?" Naturally, I looked up Hoboken Public Schools to see how we scored. In every one of our public schools, in each of the grades, third through eighth, a total of fourteen grades in total in our district, our school fell below the state average in both math and language arts with only two exceptions in language arts and three exceptions in math. Scoring partially proficient, where the majority of our grades in school scored, is considered, according to the Board of Education, failing. I'll say that word again, is considered failing. Hoboken schools are failing and we are not giving the children, their families, or the Hoboken residents, a school system that they deserve. The nine of you do not have all the answers or all the solutions and if I was sitting up on the dais with you, I wouldn't have all the answers or solutions either. What I did learn during my campaign was that this community wants to help. This community wants to be part of the solution. There are teachers and administrators that have an expertise in curriculum and programming and there are CFOs and accountants that have experience in finance. There are others that are educational lobbyists and public policy professionals that many, many want to volunteer their time to serve on a committee and help craft solutions to build a best-in-class educational system. I know because I met with these residents and I spoke to them one-on-one and they told me as they looked directly into my eyes, they shared with me their names, their contact information and asked me to contact them after the election. The first step for fixing a problem is admitting there is a problem. Ms. Tyroller, Dr. Gold, Ms. Sobolov and the rest of you, I am asking you as a taxpayer, a parent and a past candidate for the Board of Ed to admit there are still problems in our educational system. Put your differences aside, take advantage of the resources we have in this community, embrace those that have an expertise that want to help, begin working collaboratively and not divisively, be open to new ideas and solutions that may not be your own. I promise you, if you reach across the table, you will be humbled by what you find. I may not have secured a seat on the Board of Education, but I do intend to work diligently to help build a best-in-class educational system here in Hoboken. I'm not sure how or in what capacity, but I do know that I owe it to my son, my friends, my neighbors and the sixteen hundred or so Hoboken residents that supported me for my run. I will not let them down. I hope you will not let them down either. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Next speaker is Brian Murray.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize he was speaking. Brian?
Brian Murray, eleven hundred Maxwell Lane. First of all, I would like to congratulate Ms. Angley. I wish her the best of luck on the board. You know, I wish, I actually wish my wife could be here tonight because she's traveling and is not, but, you know, over the past few years, I've come up here at the microphone, I've spent a lot of time analyzing the numbers and, you know, I've disagreed with the direction that this board has taken in many, many different areas and I've also disagreed with the overall direction that the board, that the board is leading our schools in the future. My frustration and my passion for wanting something better for my kids and the rest of the children in Hoboken has sometimes been mischaracterized as me coming off as angry, where really that is just truly frustration and anger in, it's frustration and just passion instead of anger. However, this board and members on it and their Kids First Parents For Progress supporters have created an environment where my children have been harassed and bullied at school for their support of their father and his political endeavors. This goes beyond my frustration and when you want to see anger, you will see my anger and I'm putting this board and some of its members on notice that I'm holding you personally accountable for their actions of other, of, of parents, of other, their children. I'm so angry I can't speak right now. I will not forgive it. I will not forget it. If you think that it's intimidation and that I'm going to go away, actually it energizes me. My children are not going away. They're not going to be intimidated and it's just unfortunate that I'm even here right now speaking about this. And I guess we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Moffett, was that the last speaker?
Yes, it is.
Any comments before we close?
Ms. Tyroller.
First the, and first the, for the administration. Is anything you'd like to say? No, not this point. Okay.
Just very, very quickly, Mr. Murray brought up a interesting point here that his kids are being bullied in school and I know the state has very, very strict laws in terms of children being bullied. So, I hope that we do look into it. Any allegation needs to be looked into. Am I, am I right or wrong?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure that we as a board look into it.
I will see Mr. Murray.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Mitchell? Any comments? Ms. Sobolov?
I agree and I hope that we follow up that if he has mentioned to the teacher, because the first line of defense is mentioning any kind of that to the teacher or to the guidance counselor, I certainly hope that Mr. Murray avails himself of those remedies too. I also wanted to, Ms. Waiters mentioned social, social media, as did Mr. Biancomano and I just, I didn't want there to be some kind of cloud over, I just wanted to assure people that the comments, as I saw them, that Mr. Bianco showed them to me, were not racial in any manner or sexist or sort of incendiary. It was, I think it was more of a political opinion, if that's what I saw. So, I just wanted to, you know, didn't want to leave that hanging out there that it was some kind of affront on, you know, some kind of racist or sexist remarks. No, that was it. I sort of cleared it.
From this side, any comments? Okay.
You know, I think, I think I will finally. I don't say an awful lot, but to the person here who's talked about all the people out there with skill and talent to bring to the district, that's how I ended up here, as a parent sitting at board meetings and then offering my own professional expertise to the superintendent at the time, working, attending meetings, volunteering and eventually sort of taking it to its logical next step. And that's how I got here. I don't think this district or this board is at all against welcomes. I felt it myself. So, if anybody is out there, you know, with, with any skill or expertise, here we are and I'm, you know, I'm looking at a predominantly empty room, with all due respect, you know, these, these are the people who, who are here because they do care, right? And if anybody else, come on in. We moved here for a bigger audience. Thank you.
Yeah.
And another thing.
And just before, I'd just like to make a remark before we close. Interestingly enough, tonight I am the most senior board member at five and a half years and it has been an interesting experience up here because you always have a feeling like you don't want to talk about the past because you are on the board with other members that have been here longer. But now I'm in a different place because now I've been here the longest and I just want, there's not a single person on this board that thinks our work is done. We are all working very hard to improve things. We're absolutely aware of where we currently stand and the real, we really need to look at this, that it takes time and there is a tremendous amount of change that has happened from April of two thousand nine to November of two thousand fourteen. That difference, that changes, we've put a lot of, we've, we've had the teachers, the teachers have been amazing coming with the professional development that we've done with them, the fact that they've adopted a new language series, a new math series, new books, books were twenty years old in two thousand nine. We had twenty-nine repeat audit violations when we saw our first audit that came to us. Twenty-nine repeat violations. After, I think, a year or a year and a half, we got an award. We had no violations. I think we had one, one violation the next time we had an audit and it was a minor item. It had to do with a line item. And so, there's great improvements in finance, there's great improvements in the education, there's much more support for our teachers and our teachers have, you know, given back. We've had, we have a longer school day, we have a longer school year, we have tutoring after school. The teachers are also giving back to the district. So, I just want every, and the other place that we've done, there was never a capital improvement plan prior to the one that began in two thousand ten, eleven school year. We have been setting aside money in the budget to improve facilities. Before that, there was never a budget, it was just what was necessary and that's why we had disintegrating steps on this building. There was, we weren't able to do the kind of improvements that needed to be done to have our facilities be in good shape for our children. We've put labs and Connors, we've, the district, we've done major repairs like stairs and bathrooms and all that has happened under, in the last five years. It wasn't happening before. So, it's really easy for somebody to walk in and look at this district for the first time, never having paid attention before and point fingers at things that they say needs improvement, but there's not one person on this board that doesn't agree. But what the public has to understand, and probably everyone here does that's present right at this moment, is that it's a work in progress and great improvements have been made over the last five years. And so, I just wanted to thank all the people, as Tom said, that do come forward and help. Anytime I get an email asking if they can help, I pass it on to the administration because as you know, the board is at an advisory level. We're not supposed to be down where we would make people nervous, that's micromanaging. And people that come to this podium have never emailed, emailed me with offers of help, nor have I think they've reached out to any of the other boards. So, in close, I just wanted to say that. I want to thank the teachers, thank our retiree, thank our administration and thank our parents and kids that are here for helping us and working. and kids that are here for helping us and working with us as we work to improve things. So with that, do I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
Very well said.
I'm tired of it.